Alright, so everyone's here, we're gonna send three folks. Right, yes. Okay, cool, let's call, we need to order at seven oh three. If anyone wanna read the planning, landing. I'll read it, thank you. We'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who call this area home for more than ten thousand years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the incentives of these native peoples who are still here today. Thank you. Um, okay, so I think today we're probably gonna talk about what, like, comp plan? Does anybody else have anything else we need to talk about?
Uh, we will have a liaison report.
I asked for approval, we just know we're good with that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, okay, and did everybody get a chance to take a peek at the minutes? Any suggestions, edits, changes? Directions?
I, um, after reading through it, I wasn't really happy with how lines forty-four through forty-seven went. I didn't feel that it represented my view or my concern properly, so I don't know how that. I have a statement, but I don't know. What, it's my first time having to change, like, alter minutes.
Okay, you said you don't have a suggestion for how it?
Well, I, I, my suggestion was to strike it. Because I didn't feel that it represented my beliefs or, or, um, or how the conversation went either, because I kind of remembered the conversation in a different way. So should I come up with language or?
Yeah, we're moving more towards action minutes and everything's on tape. Listen to the website, so if your preference is to strike it, then re-characterize it, that would be a good thing.
Okay, well, I have a statement, so we could put that in the minutes.
Perfect.
Yeah, okay, so I just said, uh, I would like lines forty-four through forty-seven taken from the record of special meeting minutes, June sixth, two thousand twenty-four. As they do not fairly represent my views or concerns with the language of proposed policy eighty-four point six. My belief is the best way to combat past discrimination is to doggedly pursue the guiding star of equal treatment for everyone. That being the case, I'm against policies that would preference or discriminate against anyone based on their sex or race. Proposed policy eighty-four point six does both of these things. Every entrepreneur hoping to open a business in Lake Forest Park should experience the same welcome, have the same opportunity. So that's kind of like what I said in that meeting.
And Mark said that maybe she can send that, then it's a swap.
Is your proposal swap or just capture that on the record?
That's fine to capture on the record. Let's strike this, yeah. I don't know if we wanna kind of capture what happened in the conversation better, because, you know, the meeting, the minutes are very sparse this time.
My, and my hope is they keep getting sparser. Six months ago, there was almost every word you guys said.
Yeah.
So, and we re-rewatched the tapes, and so the, uh, and I don't wanna filter staff's draft. Um, but I, I support them going more towards just action.
Okay.
So if you wanna support a motion or not a motion. Or you approve the minutes, we can just strike.
Is there a motion to? Strike and then strike that?
That would be make your motion to strike that?
Approved with the strike, the second.
So we're approving it?
Yeah, approved as is with the exception of striking line forty-four.
Yeah. Or is that where?
Okay. I, I'm. Thank you. Okay. Any leads? Wanna talk about the sixteenth, and we'll kind of put that on hold.
I think I've been sending emails that said August sixth, and then I realized.
What you meant.
It's okay. August thirteenth is the second Tuesday. Uh, and so that's your next regular meeting. We have the open house next Tuesday night, the sixteenth. Um, the two steps after this with SCJ are the public hearing. And then the recommendation, plus any other work you, uh, you feel you need before you can be able to count. So those, uh, weeks are available, now that we're back. Um, if the preference is to use existing regular meetings, we could hold a public hearing and a recommendation discussion on the thirteenth. What I'd like to do in late July, early August is begin a transition informational at city council. Um, but really honor the public hearing after the open house. And then the recommendation before, uh, formal. Everything in that window. But I didn't want to do this for you to be done by August thirteenth. That, it's one of the questions for the commission, are you comfortable? With where we're at? Um, as represented by the feedback that we'll get Tuesday night. We'll have a draft, uh, pretty much formatted version of your work by Tuesday night on the website. Uh, and then, um, it'll be a pleasure for, you know, this public hearing in some way.
Can I ask a question, Will, what gets posted have the complete red line compared to the current code?
Let me get myself unmuted, um, so I was planning to present a formatted draft of the recommend, what will become the recommendation, so, um, the underline strike through is starting to look really confusing with, uh, all of the back and forth that has happened. Um, so I, my preference is to present only kind of the, the final working draft without the, without the red lines.
But, but I was, how are people then gonna be able to compare the current code to the new draft and see the, what's, if the changes that are being proposed?
Um, we're not, we're not presenting any code amendments, um, we are presenting, oh, okay. Okay, that's okay.
Yeah.
Um, so we do have that, uh, we still have the, the track changes versions. Um, but a-again, they were starting to look, um, very, uh, messy and confusing, and I, I think it will be more helpful to have the policy, uh, the current working draft of the policies alongside information about what is driving some of the changes and where those changes can be found in the comp plan. So it won't, um, wouldn't be a direct comparison of what's, what's there now and what has changed, but it would still provide information about kind of the, the, the environment that has caused some of the policies to look the way they do, and then we're available to answer questions, and if people want to see that, uh, the level of detail, uh, for, with underline strike through, we can provide that separately.
Well, I was thinking that all the back and forth, of course not, but I was thinking there would be an underlying strike through for the final changes. Um, so that people could see where we used to be and where we are now. Now, if you have, like, lengthy pages with deletion, of course, there could be some shorthand version of, of that, uh, I guess. Because, you know, sometimes when you do that, if it's lengthy, it gets put in an appendix anyway by the, you know, word formatting, so I, I do think from council member point of view that we will wanna see that side by side. I don't mind if there's also a completely clean copy for people. So maybe there are some people who are gonna wanna see just the clean copy, and some people who wanna see where have we come? Where, where, what is the language that's coming in the recommendations from the planning commission? So I just suggest that with respect. Uh, recognizing that I'm just making a suggestion.
And then, just to clarify timing, so Tuesday night's open house, feedback on the working draft. Then it gets a little bit more, um, sign of can, or a public hearing and a recommendation. And then transferring to council, then that red line and those changes and any version that absolutely needs to be.
I, I just, I, I do wonder if you, you should be prepared. I think that members of the community who previously worked on the cop plan are gonna wanna see that. So. What do you have to add, do you agree?
I, I'm sorry, I, I don't have an opinion at this point, I haven't seen the draft, no.
Okay.
And how difficult it would be to read it.
Right.
I am used to reading red lines.
It's, um, it i- it's very clunky to read through, um, and it's, it's not formatted neatly because it's been working drafts, um. So it just, it doesn't, it doesn't lend itself, I think, um, to the, the drop-in open house program where people won't have lots of time to review it. I am happy to, to have it available, um, and of course, I'm also very happy to provide it to city council when we start talking about the changes that have been made. Um, I just, um, I'm hesitant because I don't want people to get so caught up in some of the, the minutia of, like, where did this change go? Um, just because there have been so many iterations and comments, um, that have come and gone as we've done our work.
Okay.
What if we did something like a, um, change map where, for instance, all the legislative changes, we can just list those out, you know, where those cha, where a particular legislative change has been made throughout the comp plan? And then we could do a quick reference. You know what I'm saying, it's like, um, you know, for instance, it's, it's like, I mean, I think of, I can't even think of one right now, but as, as an example, but, um.
I'm, I'm just gonna say, I, I don't hear, I hear what you're saying. I think for the open house, uh, it's coming up, so do what is planned. But I think, uh, be aware that at least the council and maybe others might wanna see the red line because there's a lot of pride in the previous version of the cop plan. So, community pride, yeah, so, just ones out there. But can we provide like a QR code of all the red line for people to look at if they're interested?
Yeah, I, I can even, I can bring a printed copy. Um, I'm, I can bring a printed copy, I ju, I, um, I don't know, I don't know how useful it will be. Uh, but I can certainly print out a copy of what we've, what we've turned into the formatted document.
Because I've been in, and we're not gonna say that it's just to see the red line changes in the working draft, so I understand that.
Can I make a comment? I feel like we've actually respected the, the original document, I, I feel that most of our response and changes has been, um, directly a result of the state legislation. So we've been really responding, I think, as a, as a group to the legislature.
Yes.
Uh, dictates.
There are so many people, and so to David's point, there are so many people who have no idea.
Okay.
Uh, you know, even people who follow things. Uh, I think it's going, so the open house is really good that you're doing it. Because I think just even the middle housing stuff and the transportation stuff and the, uh, uh, equity kind of language, I, I do think that people haven't, uh, been, there's been no publicity, no news about it. Very little, I mean, your work has been publicized generally. But I do think from talking to people in the community who should know what's going on, uh, I think it's gonna come as a surprise.
I, I do feel though, if, if it is available, as, I think that's a great idea for a QR code, it's a real great, um, segue into discussion with people. But I think as a group, we can absolutely address, easily address those hot changes and help people understand it better.
That's great, and I really love the QR code, uh, idea, so. And I appreciate how messy it's going to be, I really do, so.
Okay.
I think it kind of goes back to, one of the things that we haven't all been completely in consensus with, that we wanted to take to the, to the meeting was around the equity language that's woven out throughout the whole document, and so I think it, it, it would be great to have that reference, so it's not just like, hey, there's an equity piece just right here in section three, but it's throughout the whole document and telling that, like, to your point, people aren't really aware of, and so, um, next week is a really incredible time for us to kind of get some, some feeling and some feedback on that, so. Again, just to support of it, I think it'd be great to have that document as a reference.
Thank you, I took up my question. For both a full discussion. But I appreciate it. I'm staring at those, please, come on out, do you know who's bad you go around, and that can is your plate. Oh, thank you.
Okay, um. So I guess it goes, we'll go back to the question, was this a question about, um, do we want to have a public hearing at our set meeting for August thirteenth, is that the question?
Yeah, or at least some feedback so we can begin investigating it's different dates. The special meetings are over, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, so I'm not encouraging more special meetings, but, uh, the way it goes is tonight, Tuesday night, open house, August thirteenth. So any variation we did, uh, certainly set up. With this for you.
If, if we didn't do the meeting on the thirteenth, would it just be a regular planning, we still have stuff that we need to work through?
Well, the, uh, the answer is yes. Thank you again for your work, but as soon as you make the recommendation, Christina and I have headed to House Bill eleven ten and middle housing development standards. The policies are now in this draft, and the development standards between now and next spring, uh, have to be developed. Same course of action, it's development code, not comp plan, and we don't wanna be subject to the model ordinance, um, at the end of the street. So that's your next, maybe that.
Does anyone have any objection to having a public hearing at our regularly on August thirteenth? It, it sounds like that's probably your recommendation. As well to do it.
It's the easiest, logistically. I know that sometimes, uh, council, when they make a decision on a large project, or a large issue, will wait for another meeting. That's not with the public hearing too, but the other comments, yeah. Uh, this is a recommendation to the city council, you've been having a lot since January. But had to.
We have done it both ways, honestly, where we have a meeting for second part. So, depends, okay.
All right, so August thirteenth, sounds like we'll have public hearings. I'm gonna pay that.
That would be the entire meeting, so what we're saying. And, uh, as one item, opening for, when it's, okay, meetings over the record, well, legislative, so it doesn't matter. Next item is forming your recommendation, look at any final edits, any, uh, issues or questions. But the hope is at the end of that meeting, you have a recommendation, then we can forward to the city council.
Does anyone have any complaints with that date, the August thirteenth? And can we touch base about the open house too next week? Is everybody available for that? I think we're all looking good, I know Yanni was, and Maddie, and. Same. I might be a little bit late. All right, great, so I'll be there for three hours. For four seven.
I need to bring the puppies. That's why.
Great, that is very cool, we're all available, especially in summer. Okay. So anything else wanna talk about with the meeting date to the public? Okay.
I'll leave that there. For this round.
Do we have anybody online?
Yeah, it doesn't look like it. Oh, and reminder, we're not taking online public call.
That's right. Okay.
Do you wanna? Yeah, so this is my last meeting, um, and it's been a few years, so I feel a little nostalgic. But I'm leaving you in the good hands of council member John Lebo. He has himself been a planning commission member and chair of the planning commission, so, uh, I think that he'll be fun for you to interact with and keep you up to date on council developments the way I have. Um, I will come to the open house of the public hearing, so, uh, even though I'm not the official liaison, I'm gonna, you know, still show up for old times' sake, right, so, um, and, uh, I will say, you know, that, um, it's been really fun, there's been a wide range of things. And I, you know, I've worked for, for almost my whole time, I think some of you, and then others, um, just more recently, but it's really been a pleasure, I really appreciate how thoughtful and community oriented, um, your comments have been, you know, and, uh, just remember that if the commission can't agree, you can send something forward to the council with a cover memo that says, here was a topic we were grappling with, you know, we couldn't agree, or we have a majority and minority opinion, or we didn't make a recommendation on this, um, at all. But here's some of the options we were considering, in other words, you have full flexibility. I'm, I'm reminding you also, as I say goodbye, that you are a creature of state law. Not just a, a creation of the, of the council, so you have a certain amount of independence to, um, formulate your own work plan to, uh, and pick up issues if you want to. An example from the past is the planning commission picked up the reasonable abuse exemption um, on its own motion, it didn't, that request of council. So just a few reminders, and, um, you know, make sure you have some fun, uh, as you go along. Because this has been quite a slog, I think, uh, to go through, and thank you, Mark, for stepping in also as a new person, just like drinking from the fire, so you knew what it felt like, so, right, so that part's good. Um, the council is, uh, continuing just a few things, I, I mentioned the budget process, starting almost parallel with, um, this, the biennial budget, so that's gonna be, uh, challenging for the council to be juggling both the comp plan and the biennial budget, which we have to adopt. We tried to adopt it by the end of November, and we, but we have to adopt it by, I think, the first week of December, so, uh, that's gonna be a lot of work, the mayor will present his budget to us, his proposed budget to know the end of August or the beginning of September, in that timeframe, so then we'll really, you know, start, uh, chomping on it. Um, the, uh, and some years, we have a lot of public comment on it, other years, you know, very little. So, um, last but not least, I just mentioned that the council, um, council members and the mayor are going to be, because there's been some questions on Sound Transit, and the mayor and certain council members are going to send a letter to Sound Transit, again, um, kind of following up on our concerns, but honestly, I don't know where that's gonna go, we're gonna try to ask for some face-to-face views, so. Um, with that, I'll introduce John, let him speak for himself.
Thank you, I am John Lebo, I've been a council member now for about two and a half years. I, as Lori mentioned, and I must say, she's set on high standards, so I don't ever imagine that I'm deep, like, I participate as well as I can. I was a planning commission member from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty, and I participated during the book signing, uh, writing of the previous company. And when we were doing that, uh, those that were involved in the previous one were very gracious, who recognized the changes were occurring, so I'm delighted to see that it's being updated, and the pride of authorship extends to the, only to the extent that I was involved. Um, but I think as time changes, uh, having new people look at it as well as recognize the changes that are ongoing, and there have been a lot of changes, both politically, stability-wise, equity-wise. I think with the new comp plan, recognize, and I must say that those who wrote it in the past addressed the issues that were in front of them at the time, and tried to think forward, but I think that speech group tends to look at it, become the different eye perspective, and I think it's quite welcoming. So, I'm proud to see that it's being revised. And that it's not otherwise being steadfast and strong. Um, long time, like, first park resident, uh, we moved here when I was five, back to Lake Forest Park Elementary School, graduated from church. And all my boys had to, through short life. So, as my wife says, this is the last house people will ever buy. Quite a while, um, I am a Sound Transit employee. So I do recuse myself when I discuss about Sound Transit project. While I don't have any direct involvement, I just wanted to separate myself. But if you ever ride the east side lane project, that. Now, the question is, when will we open up the floating bridge segment? We're planning next year. Alighted to participate, and I do have the background, I am a licensed architect and a land of a lot of engineers. So I try to bring a whole list appropriately, too. And enjoy it very much being on the planning commission and enjoying coming back to it. Coming back to all present. But with a new perspective, so. Thank you for welcoming me.
Yeah, awesome.
And this female looks familiar.
Hello again.
Did you work on the last conference?
Um, I was involved in the town center process.
Okay.
Um, I was working with OTAC at the time, um, and I was working under Mandy Roberts. So I would say I was primarily involved in the code amendment portion. I had some involvement in the plan, um, a little bit in the vision, but mostly in the, in the code.
That was a very interesting time, I was on the commission, but I had recused myself, so I didn't get a conversation, right, uh, town center planning, because Sound Transit was proposing to go to work.
Twenty forty-four, the current estimated date. For the garage.
We'll catch it in the next update, guys.
Yeah.
Well, thank you also, council member Bodhi, yeah, we really appreciated your feedback.
Yeah, thanks, it's been great fun, so. In your insight too, and just explaining things to us, because, nobody gets violent at city council, so it's very helpful, and you've done it down for us too. Really appreciate it, so thank you for all the time.
Yeah, you're very welcome, and it's been my pleasure. I'll just stay for the rest of the season. And I'll hang out with you on July sixteenth and August thirteenth.
Great, well, do we wanna pass it over to Christina to help us through the open house and what, what we're gonna work with next week?
Right. Just bring up my screen share, I'm sorry in advance, this is very visually uninteresting presentation. Um, but I'm trying to squeeze a lot of status update, there's still a lot of stuff being developed, so apologies for kind of how graphically dull it is, uh, but here we are, uh, Lake Forest Park comp plan update already in July, uh, somehow. And can everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, good, uh, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about where we're at with the draft comp plan, then we'll talk through the open house program, and um, we'll see if that takes up the full amount of time, um, who knows, maybe we'll end on time or a little early tonight, at least with my portion. Um, all right, so where we're at with the comp plan, uh, I've got nine out of ten elements formatted, uh, so Parks, Trails and Open Space is still in the works. Um, but that will be done, uh, for next week. There are still some minor updates needed throughout the document, so we have to clean up some of the uh, little placeholders that we had left when we weren't quite sure where some things would go, kind of depending on how work wound up in, um, in, in other elements. A great example of that is that there's a placeholder for any middle housing policies in the land use element. Um, we're also still waiting on a little bit of funding, um, information, um, uh, project, um, planning information and, and data to trickle in for capital facilities, utilities, and the transportation elements. They're largely done, but we still just need a little bit more information from, uh, public works, from utility providers, et cetera. We also are still working on adding, uh, updated graphics and photos to replace some of the images that were in that twenty fifteen plan. If anybody has anything that they'd like to contribute, any pictures of Lake Forest Park that you love, um, please send them to Mark, and he can pass them along to me. I would love to include those in the plan if anybody has anything, um, open invitation for you and your friends. Um, and then we are also wrapping up the maps, I have, uh, twelve out of seventeen maps updated and five still underway. Those are primarily transportation focused, uh, so the, uh, walking, bicycle and transit route maps, uh, drive times from town center, um, that figure is, is in the twenty fifteen plan, and then, uh, there's a, a figure for regional land uses, um, which may or may not still be valuable, uh, TV. which may or may not still be valuable TVD on that one. Does anybody have any questions on where the document is at at this point? Or would anybody like a sneak preview? I have it open on my laptop.
Yes, please.
Okay. Sorry, I have to scroll through my like fourth thousand open locations. Just a second. Okay, there we go. Here's what it looks like so far. Did it? Did it come up a Word document?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So it's still formatted in two volumes with goals and policies in volume one and background analysis in volume two. As you can see, there's still there's still some stuff that we're that we're working on to to get it all polished. But here is what the plan is looking like, the new graphic style. Kind of a refresh using some of the colors that are already present in your more recent planning documents, some similarities in the font types. A lot of similarities in the overall structure, naming conventions. But with all of the updated text that we have been working on. These are some of the old engagement photos. We'll take new photos on Tuesday. There's the land use element. This is very lengthy. I don't know if you want me to scroll through the whole thing, but to give you a flavor of what what it's looking like. This is kind of how the goals and policies are presented. This map figure needs to be replaced still, but we have the updated one.
It's really good.
Good. I'm really happy to hear that. Yeah, I'm I'm really happy with it. I think that our graphics team has really knocked it out of the park. And it's a Word document, so it's really easy for the city to maintain an update over time versus an in design document or something that requires a more specialized program. Climate policies in there, the environmental quality insurance. Oh, one thing that I did not note in the current status, I have a working glossary. It's about a page and a half long list of terms that will be defining. If anybody has any terms that they'd like to include, please send that list to Mark. I've taken a selection of technical terms. I'm sure that I have missed some. If so, if you do have any that you want to make sure wind up in the glossary, let me know. Otherwise, of course, whatever feedback you have, when the draft gets circulated for review, I'm happy to incorporate those as well. All right, then go ahead and swap back to my PowerPoint. Any other questions on current status or anything else that you'd like to see in the document? Yes, I should have asked that before I stopped sharing.
If there's any.
Anything in the draft document that you want to take a look at as kind of a sneak peek?
I have a suggestion. One thing we haven't touched on other than verbally is the implementation. I want to call it an element, chapter, section, element. Area. We we kept parking things in there, making decisions that it's not policy, it's an implementation item. And we we haven't talked about where they're parked.
So I got to catch Elmer.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we will be adding an implementation plan to this document that captures all of those implementation actions and adds a few. Like, for example, we know that there are going to be some code amendments that are required to implement some of the legislation and some of the policy changes that have come from that legislation. So we'll be presenting. It's typically a fairly high level summary of implementation actions categorized in short term, midterm, long term. And then as things get crossed off the short term list, new items cycle their way into that short term bucket as work plans get developed. So you'll see that next time as well. All right, then let's talk open house. All right, so open house will be at the Third Place Commons next Tuesday, July sixteenth. And the time that I have noted is four o'clock to seven o'clock. Mark, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, great. And the format will be a drop in style. So there will be no programmed presentation or anything that people need to worry about missing or or being on time for whatever. They'll be able to to get the full experience regardless of when they show up. Right now, I have five stations on my on my list. So station number one is what is a comprehensive plan? Station number two talks about what legislative changes we're planning for. Got a station dedicated to housing. I have a station dedicated to economic development. And then I have a station for next steps. I have gone back and forth about whether we need to have a separate station for transportation. There are some transportation changes, but the infrastructure, the infrastructure in Lake Forest Park is pretty mature. So in terms of how we're prioritizing that, I we may be able to capture it elsewhere, and we can talk about that a little bit. In a minute. So station number one, what is a comprehensive plan? Has some information about what a comprehensive plan is generally, why Lake Forest Park has to have one, what is in the plan? Why we're updating it and what the benefit is for people to be involved. Fairly high level information, just to give people an understanding of like, what is this document and what does it do? And why? Why should I care about it?
Is this by way of like a one page flyer per station? Or how are you?
It's a so there's going to be a board, like an easel board at each station so that multiple people can gather around. I will have a flyer for people to take away that has some summary information on it. We'll also refer back to the website where all of the information will be posted. So people can certainly take a look at anything they missed and then also dive a little bit deeper on topics that they are interested in.
Thanks.
Station, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Christina, we also define what the difference between goals and you know, the the slide that you've been presenting almost every every time.
Yeah, yeah, I can absolutely make sure that that winds up here. Let me, sorry, let me make a note.
Good reminder.
Okay, great. All right, thank you for that. Okay, any other? Any other information that people want to make sure winds up on station one in this kind of general educational category? Okay. Station number two is talking about some of the recent legislative changes. So we had some really big changes in recent years. We're going to kind of try and divide these by year, I think. Or maybe we will mix them all up and not entirely sure what the board layout is going to look like. It'll either be by year or it'll be by topic, but then it will be very heavily weighted towards housing, since that's where a lot of the changes were. But in the twenty one twenty two session, that's where we had HB twelve twenty, which is where we started to get planning for housing broken down by income level. This requirement to address barriers and racially disparate impacts. In the twenty two twenty three legislative session, this is where we saw middle housing and where we saw climate. This is also where some of the big changes related to transportation planning came from, where we start to see a little bit more planning focus on multimodal and active transportation modes showing up. This is also when we got the requirement for ADUs to ADUs on single family lots. So this was another big housing year. And then the more recent legislation or legislative session has a little bit, not nearly as sweeping as the last couple of years. But there have been some changes on how parking can be regulated with respect to how housing can be developed. Some changes in common ownership projects and the rules for those things like condos or townhouses. And then the middle housing requirements were modified this year as well. So we'll have broadly some information on all of these things. It may be maybe one board, it may be multiple boards that have all of this information presented. And then because housing is so big, we're going to have a separate station focused entirely on housing. Leland is providing the information that goes here. So this is going to include more specific information about legislative changes and how they apply to Lake Forest Park. We are also going to include a mapping activity in this station where we will map out areas of potential change within the city. We are not going to be showing the ADU requirements here, since that is so broadly applicable in Lake Forest Park. It would essentially be just the entire, almost the entire city would show up as an area of change. So this is going to really focus on what we've called middle housing opportunity areas, the areas that David and Andrew spoke about related to where middle housing might reasonably locate. And then we're going to be asking people to give us some feedback about the types of middle housing that they think belong in which portions of the city. It's kind of an echo back to the survey that we did. But a little more, a little more tactile, and I think a little bit easier to understand, since it won't be broken up into so many different questions. It'll be more comprehensive, I think, and therefore just I I think a little easier way to give some some similar information. And what we're hoping to get out of that is ideally, the preferred six types of middle housing that people want to see in Lake Forest Park and where those should go. I suspect that we will get some feedback on why middle housing is maybe not appropriate. And we will have a person staffing this station to talk about what some of the requirements are and how they're showing up in our recommendations. Questions or comments on this piece? Let me get my notes up. Hold on.
I I have a question. Are you going to have a way of sharing the survey results at all? Yes, same question. Because, you know, it's kind of, we we heard from you initially, and we had, you know, a lot of replies, whatever the number is. And here are some of the main messages we heard or something, just same.
I do have the report. I actually just got the updated draft today. I need to review it, but it will be it will be ready. The results are are final. The findings are final as well. Are you thinking that you want those the middle housing specific results like added to this station or just have the report available for review?
Like if we could have it per section, so people are thinking about housing. And then this is what we got. So it gets my immediate feedback rather than just a general.
Okay.
Yeah, either that or a place where, just like what is a comprehensive plan? What did we hear from the community in response to our survey? It doesn't have to be minutely detailed with numbers of graphics. But that was my thought is just to let people know that here's what we heard you, because you might have filled one out and you don't know what the community as a whole said.
Okay. That sounds good. All right. So I have noted for station one to include a very brief summary of the engagement results. And then to include relevant information from the survey by topic on these stations.
And will we be able to see that completed report prior to next week?
I should be able to get it to Mark tomorrow. So if he's if he's able to circulate it outside of a regular agenda packet, then I think you can have it as early as tomorrow.
Okay. And then I'll broadcast it further. Thank you.
Okay.
Mary, I was just going to suggest back into legislative changes, having the actual House bills noted so that people, when you say this is the change, the House bills right there. So that if people want to say, okay, well, I want to go read that and see.
Sure. Yeah, I can definitely make sure that those are noted. Yes, they are. They're in they're in the actual draft content. All of the specific bill references are in the the draft content that marketing is formatting for me. So I'll make sure that those do show up on the board as well. Other comments on station two or station three? Okay. And then station for station four is a discussion on economic development. This came from the most recent discussion we had related to more neighborhood serving retail and services beyond just what is present in town center. And so this is an opportunity where we'll be again asking for feedback on some of the neighborhood serving types, the the appearance and scale of buildings and where those kinds of things might be desirable and appropriate in the city. So this is another mapping exercise largely with an opportunity to provide some additional written comments here as well. Questions or comments on this piece? And then station five is the next steps for this project. So here on the left, I'm showing that we have, you know, we still have to complete our CIPA review or environmental review. This is planned for fall twenty twenty four. That consists of completing the checklist. We have the draft. We need to make some updates to that. But completing the checklist, making a threshold determination on that. Planning commissions remaining work includes the public hearing and making a recommendation, which we plan for summer twenty twenty four. City council picking up that work, I suppose this should say summer to fall twenty twenty four, beginning review. Likely holding your own public hearing, their own public hearing, and then taking final action to adopt the plan later than December thirty first, May twenty four. On the right is where we, there's kind of a catch all for implementation actions and some other things on the horizon. So implementation next steps include staff preparing recommendation for short, mid and long term implementation actions. For reference, that timeframe is like the next couple of years, the next three to five years, and then stuff that happens six or more years down the line. And then that implementation plan would be reviewed, edited and reviewed and edited by planning commission, who will then recommend it to city council for further review, edit and adoption. One big note is that development regulations must be updated to implement certain policies. We already talked about this a little bit. But that that development regulation work will begin as pretty much as soon as planning commission has made their recommendation. So that that's a big piece that people will need to know about, since that's going to affect potentially how they can use or develop their property. And then climate planning is going to be happening, starting this summer at some point. This is to adopt the full fledged climate elements. That's another big piece that I think people will be really interested in. Before I move on, any questions or comments on this station?
I have a question. Will the the climate action legislation also be part of this discussion at all? So I know it kind of overlaps, but not part of the conflict process.
I've debated on it. I I've gone back and forth because I've gone back and forth because. The city has done some climate planning in this effort. It is not directly responding to the climate legislation and Lake Forest Park is not due to adopt its climate element until 2029. The city is getting an early jump on it, which is awesome. But it isn't specifically required for this comp plan and I don't, I don't want to distract from the meat of the work that we've done. If a climate station is strongly desired, then I think I can pull that together, but. That's why I haven't included it so far, with the exception of noting it in station two as part of the legislative framework that we're working under. Happy to have, happy to have discussion and feedback here on whether this should be included.
So is your idea that perhaps there would be a better time later on that we would have and have community outreach?
Yes. Yeah, so the, the climate element will have its own public participation program and its own public participation activities. So that, that piece. Once, once that consultant is under contract and. Working away, I, I think that the city will have a better understanding of exactly what that outreach will look like. There is. Having, having written the grant application, I can tell you that there is funding allocated for public engagement. Separate of the rest of the comp plan process just focused on climate. Especially since it's such a big topic that covers both resilience and greenhouse gas emissions. So there's, there's a. It's a, it's a meaty topic to dive into.
And largely we've been overlapping and keeping them separate. So the climate action plan is adopted, we proactively took the policies from that and incorporated them into your drought. Where appropriate in preparation. This Thursday, the nominations for the climate policy advisory team. Hopefully will be confirmed that they're set next Tuesday, next Thursday, we have four consultants as presenting. Quickly make a recommendation, bring that to city council. And then if that goes well, we've negotiated contract to perform the scope of work for that. So it's very similar, but it'll be one element, we'll probably pull in some of those policies into. That element that you've just put into other elements. And it'll be very quick. The climate policy advisory team is made up of three planning commissioners, three CAC members, one tree board member. The, the effort is the planning commissions, that's the annual voluntary document. That all has to go to city council. Next spring, I think we have the grant due June 15th. And I'm hoping the very last line on the grant gets dropped or this or drafted climate element.
I think so.
Climate action plan, but just to underscore what you said, so we do have that as an official. Action of the city council, so it's kind of our interim. You know, approach basically and. Recognition of the work of the climate action.
And it's largely implementation items, so we hold the policy like that. We're going to, between now and next June, fulfill that metal gap, which is the climate element policy, greenhouse gas. Subout vehicle miles traveled, then you meet that mandate. Whereas the climate action plan normally comes after that. We'll have the spectrum done next summer.
No, I think it's a great opportunity to explain that to people as, because I know there's going to be some questions that will possibly some questions that overlap. As it does have that overlap area with the climate process, but.
Would you, so would you like me to bring a, or add a climate station as well? Just for information, even though it's not specifically represented in our current body of work?
Personally, no, but I just want to make, I think if the messaging could be that there is this legislation and just kind of give people a heads up perhaps. It, it just prides people for this discussion coming down the pipeline.
And be included next step.
Hundred percent, exactly, yeah, but yeah, I don't, I, I think it's too much already.
Okay.
Yeah, because it was overwhelming for us, I think as well, so.
Yeah, I, we, it, trying to explain exactly how the processes relate and overlap and connect was. Tough for everyone. Okay, I, I, and I think we can, we can make a note on station two that there will be more work coming on climate. We, like, we have a little bit more of a description about what each of those, when we go back to station two. So we have a little bit more description about what each of these things means. Beyond what's shown here and that, that, so that will. I can add a little bit more to climate planning that talks about kind of what's coming down the pipeline for this and when people might have. An opportunity to get involved.
And you said it wasn't due until 2029?
Yeah, because, so it was a 2023 bill, right? And so the idea that jurisdictions do in 2024 would need to respond to something like that just seemed really unfair. So the jurisdictions who are all due in 2024 got put at the end of the list for compliance checks. Yeah, so Lake Forest Parks isn't mandated until 2029.
Sometime there.
But. That is. Sorry.
We're doing it anyway, we're doing it early.
When they originally advertised the grant, they said if you're due later, probably don't apply. There's not enough votes, that didn't turn out to be the case. I came here and obviously it wasn't the case because Lake Forest Park was awarded in that first group. Which of the deadline now is the grant deadline.
Oh.
As opposed to the, the legislative deadline.
Yep.
It's the grant deadline.
All the materials go to commerce, June 15th, 2025 and whatever shape they're in. Because it's a reimbursement based grant, it's kind of like going.
And that's good, there's. There's some political discussion about rolling back some of the climate requirements, which would impact funding if it's not been obligated. So having, having that funding in your pocket now lets you do the most work possible. So your funding shouldn't be in jeopardy if that, if that did end up coming to pass. All right. So taking a look, sorry?
I'm sorry, can we look at station number four again, because I'm just kind of getting my, trying to get my head around. What is it, what's the information that we want to collect from that station?
Yeah, so the, the, the station, so this, the question here is, are there? Is there a desire for neighborhood serving commercial at specific nodes on, on? Corridors in Lake Forest Park? If so. What kinds of? What kinds of commercial and service uses would go there and how? Like, what would the appearance of that be? So last time David talked a little bit about some of the, or maybe that was the, the meeting before. Had provided some images of some, some different neighborhood serving commercial structures and the kinds of businesses that are located in those. So getting a, getting a sense of. Do we want this? What should it look like? What kinds of things would be appropriate for these neighborhood serving uses? And this would end up getting rolled into more of a, more of the implementation plan than our actual policy work to date.
Thank you.
All right. Anything on station five? Okay. Then my last question for you is I'd like to do kind of a more fun. Either youth accessible or all ages activity. Have whichever, whichever lens you, you prefer, I'm hoping that we can capture younger folks as they're using the building, maybe even families. I've got some options here that I would love your feedback on, so option number one is what I'm calling the wishing tree. And the questions or prompts for that station could be, what's something you think Lake Forest Park needs to thrive? Or what's something that you need to thrive in Lake Forest Park? And this, this would be like an image of a tree that people can hang their wish on. The second option is a community collage, which is essentially just giant blank piece of paper that we would tack to the wall. With the prompt to draw or write something that comes to mind when you think of your future in Lake Forest Park. And then the last option I'm calling help us help you. And this is, this is another map exercise that asks people to identify where they like to go and how they get there. So that includes noting the typical route that they would take and also the, the mode that they use. And this is a great way to talk about barriers in, in the transportation network, especially for people that don't have a car. So this is where I thought we might end up, if we, if we went with this option where we might end up. Talking more about some of the transportation changes that are required. This could also potentially just be incorporated into its own station if we do decide that we want a transportation station at the end of this discussion. So with that, does anybody? Does it, do, do we like the idea of this kind of activity? And if so, which one seems the most fun?
I like the idea, I think, you know, we, we want to encourage people of all ages to come, so we probably should have something that. Is appealing to them. Personally, I like the wishing tree, I think that's really straight to the point and you know what is top of mind for everyone. I like both one and two, I like the community collage because then even really young kids can get involved, they can't write something down, draw a picture.
You could combine the two.
Yeah. So maybe if there's a way to combine the wishing tree with a community collage so that. At least that prompt.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think we could, we could do that.
Or even also for the wishing tree, you can just say write or draw. What's, what you need or to drive in Lake Forest Park or something you think you need to drive. So the, so the wishing tree, is that going to have like, like sticker notes that they can put on the tree? Or how are they going to write that on the tree?
So what I would like to do is like a. Paper cutout shape, it could be a sticky note maybe where, but something, something that's like a nice shape like. A, like an apple or a pine cone or some, something that's, you know, that grows on a tree. I don't know, maybe it could be birds. And people can write on that and then they can fill in the tree and make it this like very bountiful looking tree. I'm also sort of hoping that I can make it a 3D, like a. Like two cardboards that slot together so that it can be like a very visually interesting tactile activity. So that's, that's my concept plan so far.
So here's my concern about doing this kind of activity. I guess it's my cynical side that comes out, it's like, okay, I'm coming to this activity and being asked to get more information. What are you going to do with that information? That, so, you know, I just, I want to know that I, as a, as a participant in an activity like this, I would want to know. How purposeful is this information that I'm giving? Is it just for like a community building? Exercise or is there a reason why we're collecting this information? How, how is the city going to use that information? So with that said, I'm wondering if it's, you know, it's less about asking the community what their wishes are, it's more about asking who is our key. Like what if we ask, you know, what do you do? Just about people's lives, like who are you? Why are you coming to this event? Why are you interested in the comp plan? You know, how many kids do you have? You know, just information that has people actually be engaged in a way that, that, that's inviting. I mean, not to say that this is, the wishing tree is not inviting. But I'm just thinking from a, from, you know, my own experience coming into. An activity, wondering what's the purpose of this? And I'm not attached to have to putting that, putting that out there.
Yeah, so I. I would hesitate to ask some of the demographic questions and that can be, that can be a barrier to participation for, for people. But asking, asking something related to. You know, how they, how people. How people think of or relate to their city or, or. What they, what they think of, of their community, I don't know, something to that effect, that could be, that could be a really interesting question.
Or like, what, what's your favorite city event you've been to?
Yeah.
Then we could be like, oh, well, there are lots of people that love it, you know, and like, or then we could kind of get a, what do people love to do? What have they been participating in?
Now we know where to table them. I guess as long as the question that you're asking still makes it relevant for all ages. I mean, it's supposed to be all ages, so I, when I think of that, I think also like kids. Maybe some of that stuff is relevant for them. Also, little kids weren't ever asked anything about comprehensive plans, so they didn't get followed up, did they? Like the idea of, you know, like what, you know, it, it's kind of a, like what would it look like?
It could be like, I like to bike on the Brooklyn or I like to go into the, you know, yeah, I get ice cream at. Town Center.
Yeah, for little kids, it could be what do you like about living in Lake Forest Park?
And little kid answers are the absolute best answers in these kinds of events, they're so great.
And that would probably make a great extra to put in coffee.
No, I appreciate what you're saying, but I, I wonder if we could maybe even keep it simpler in the context of the comp plan to ask maybe two questions. And, and the theme being what do you love about the city? And what would you love to see, you know, different in the city to improve it? So just keeping it super simple, but I, I think in the context of the complaint, it'd be a great way to see what people are thinking. Are we on the same page as, as the community as to the vision of the comp plan? And I think this is a great tool for that, all ages inclusive.
I like that paired question, what do you love about the city and what do you need in the city?
Or your first question, what's something you think LFP needs to thrive, something about what they would love to see. And what they love about the city, it just, it can be either one of those, but to see in the context of the comp plan, whether we are indeed. In, in alignment with, with the folks there, I think that would be really interesting.
Okay.
So you also mentioned that potentially there, there would be a fifth station or sixth, sixth station. In regards for transportation and I'm wondering if. What's everybody think about that? It seems like it's the white elephant that's. Everyone wants to talk about all of that. This is when I'm talking to people, that's what people, that's what the concerns are.
Can I ask a question in response to that? Actually, I, I'm not sure what you, what our role will be there when we do get questions like this. I don't know. How do you see us there? I mean, are we all on the same page? I mean. Are we giving six different answers for if the transportation comes up? I mean, that is, that was a pretty meaty one too. Did you have an idea Christina as to what the commissioner's roles would be there?
I, I guess my. So my thought is that the, you're representing the work that you're, that you're doing and the, the. Recommendation that you're hoping to make with the draft plan that, that people are looking at. People may have questions about the process, they may have questions that can be. Pretty easily answered by any of you, but if there are technical questions that are beyond. Your, your comfort in answering, I will be there and I have, I'm bringing two staff members as well. Who will be able to answer some of the more technical questions. Who will be able to answer some of the more technical questions about. Why, you know, what's driving some of the specific language that's been recommended? Or, you know, how does this legislation appear? You know, so we'll be there and you can always defer to us. If, if needed.
Good. To then to Dave's question, could there, would there be a station then with? I don't know, are we, are we having a station per element? Or are we going to just have everybody or have people at the comp plan with the different elements presented? So people could ask about, say, transportation versus land use, but economic development has kind of its own. Stations, so and housing, as does housing, how?
So I, I am not, I'm not proposing that we make a station per element. There, uh, you know, obviously we've made changes in all of the elements. But the chain, the stations that I'm, that I've pulled out, I think are the ones that are going to have. The greatest, the, the greatest public interest. And so that's why I've selected those. They're also the ones that have had the biggest changes based on legislative requirements. And as I'm talking through this, I think I do want to include one specifically focused on transportation. Anyway. So. Yeah, I want people to be able to visit all of the stations and get something out of it without spending their entire evening. Here at, at the open house. Just because that can be, it can be really tough for people or they feel like they've missed out if they didn't have enough time to visit everything. So I, I'm trying to curate the topics. If there are some topics that you think need to be specifically called out, then, then I'm happy to do that. Land use and housing. Kind of go hand in hand at this point. Similar to having the mature transportation network, the land use pattern is fairly well set. And a lot of the big changes in land use are being driven almost exclusively by some of the, the housing requirements. You know, so we're not planning on dramatic rezones anywhere. There aren't wholesale changes in the types of land uses broadly speaking. But there are, there are a lot of changes related to what kinds of housing can go in single family neighborhoods. Coming out of the, the ADU bill and the middle housing bill. So that's, that's kind of the, the thought behind why, why housing, economic development, similar. That kind of, that kind of change in use, I think is going to have a lot of, a lot of opinions. People potentially accepting commercial into the neighborhoods. Is something that, that I think merits a little bit more education and community discussion. But some of the changes that we're making, you know, in environmental quality, for example, that element. Remains really, really true to how it was presented in the 2015 plan. Where we're really focused on prioritizing environmental conservation, preservation enhancement as the hallmark of this community. So the spirit of that element hasn't changed the same way, um, this, you know, the, the housing one has, for example. So. That's a really long way of saying that I, I'm trying to limit the total amount of information there so that people can participate. And I've, I've tried to be really selective about what I'm presenting.
I'm, I'm so glad you're using us as a sounding board too. I hope, I think we all are interested in seeing this being a very productive, um, open house. So we are at your service as well. Please consider how we can, you know, help man those stations to, to. Communicate.
Okay.
Based on the last meeting, we've also, uh, the commissioners agreed to communicate this grassroots, boots on the ground. Communicate with our social networks to invite people, so. Thank you, yeah.
I had one thought, I wrote this down a while ago, and I don't know if it's important back when we're talking about what's a comp plan, but. Do we want to also say who makes changes to it? How, how these things are recommended? And essentially who are we and what is a planning commission? The other thought I have in mind too is, you know, people might be interested like, oh, I love this. How do I get involved doing something similar like this? Fill a board at some point. So I, I, I don't know if we can touch on what, what our role is in this.
Yeah, I think that we can.
We could even touch on all of the boards that are available and I don't know if there are. How to get involved with the community more.
The city would like to have an accepted station.
I think you just pointed to the city guy. We get into the resources electronically. I, I end up my card left in my.
You can have a donation box.
Yeah.
Mark is just going to be stationed at next steps and his job is going to be like, hey, do you want to be on a board? You want to be on a commission? Here, call me.
So Christine, just to confirm, so you're thinking having a sixth station for transportation?
Yeah, yep. Even if, even if there aren't. Uh, there, there are obviously a lot of changes that we've discussed related to, in particular, active transportation or non. Single occupancy vehicle options. There aren't going to be a lot of network changes, but people are, are definitely going to have a lot of opinions about transportation that they're going to want to share. And I think that having a space to do that will be valuable. And I can add, I can add another map that asks people to specifically identify any. Barriers that they experience when they're navigating the city, either in a car or in some other kind of mode. That, that we can then consider as kind of a. Adding to the state, safe streets and safe highways work related to prioritizing different. Improvements, pedestrian improvements primarily.
Maybe you could have that station next to the housing station.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, I'll move that to station three point five. Okay.
Will there be an opportunity, would there be a comment box or anything along that nature? Just for any other comments people might have miscellaneous comments or comment boxes at the station? Just anonymous comments.
Yeah, we could take comments at the stations or we could just have one catchall comment box. People can maybe grab comment cards at a station and then we can collect them all at the, at the last station. I'll see if I can pull together enough comment boxes to put them at each of the stations.
Do you want us to come early to help set up?
If they close at nine and the events for, for seven drop in. We have official use of area three. Their limited staffs have helped set up and promises to be available by three thirty. Essentially the stations. We can move those slightly. We don't have use of the stage or a microphone or any sort of presentation thing. But we can kind of adjust it to fit as many stations. Chairs, no chairs, but they give an environment we like. So if you want to show up, three fifteen, three thirty. Kind of get used to an area, make it your own. Inviting for coming discussions. That'd be helpful.
How do we want to separate those where?
I think you should all feel comfortable floating around. Like pick a station and then when you're done with whatever conversation you've had at that station, feel free to move on. I don't think anybody needs to be tethered to a station.
Well, we have that, just something that we can have, that helps to identify who we are as planning commission.
Yes.
Okay, that'd be very helpful. Yeah, I haven't seen a box of those here yet, but yes.
I got name tags. I got a big bag of name tags.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah. We, uh. Maybe not the whole time, but at least showing up to see what's happening. Yeah, I'm sure most council members.
We didn't want to go through a poll and say, are we going to have three of you or four of you or who's interested, who's in town? So we just noticed it for, uh, planning commission, tree board, CAC, city council, planning commission. I said that twice.
Anyway, I'm sure, I'm sure most council members, if not all, uh, still may be before town.
When you are finished, uh, preparing what the community will see flyers? Or will you send that to us? Cause that will be kind of a helpful, you know, just preparation for. For me to just make sure.
Yes, I can circulate everything in advance.
I think it would be good.
Yeah.
Sorry, I've taken some notes. Sorry if my face is weird.
It might be good, especially on the transportation and the housing to have a printed copy of the, of those elements there. So that then, let's say that we get a question that isn't really in transportation, that isn't really regarding what work we do. Then we could say, well, this is, these are the things that we've worked on and kind of reference that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna have, I, I think one copy per station. Of the current working draft of the comp plan. And I'm sure that they'll, I'm sure they'll migrate. But then at least people can, you know, snatch a, snatch a copy that's not in use and, and all of the information will be there. All right, other, other comments on the open house? Okay. That brings me to the end of my content for this evening. Thank you for your feedback and your thoughtful questions on the open house materials. I will, I will circulate those as soon as they're available. My graphics team is working on them, started, started laying out the boards today with the draft content. So as those, as those get finished, I will provide them to Mark for getting sent out to you all.
Thanks for all the work, Christine. I know this was, you have one month to do your whole wish list and stuff.
Yeah, I'm sorry that the, the voiceover PowerPoint didn't come together, but I think, I think I've got everything else that was on the wish list.
We have a new business.
You sort of took care, I, the next item under old business B was a catchall. And you, I think the consensus back when we were talking about meeting dates captured. But the intent was now that the program for the open house is kind of set and we've worked towards that and then it occurs. Are there other things? And we've already talked about the public hearing recommendations. I have nothing for, I'd be. Then we do not have any. I'm tempted to put new business on August thirteenth, but I won't. I'll wait a little bit.
Reports and announcements, how's your guys' hiring feeling? Was it next role that we're still looking to fill?
Exactly, senior planner and there's possibilities, but it's not going to lie.
I did that.
But we'll see.
It took us like almost three years to get a project manager at Public Works, so just saying it's hard to be competitive as a small city.
Yeah, across the board, all the day. I keep trying. I, I'll, I'll add a bright note, trees are the highlight of our code is going very well. Be hard at that, but hopefully next week or two, a little bit more, but project manager of Public Works, same, same predicament.
Um, Mark, are we pushing a notice of the open house out to like shoreline area news and?
We, I, well, today I finished every tool that I think I have. I'm open to any suggestions.
Okay, okay, I was just.
I'm not saying I'm done, but.
Cause I just, I'm so curious how many people are going to show up.
Yeah.
I, I mean, an example is with our traffic camera updates, we're starting to issue warnings. To people of what it would be if this was a real violation. And so people are like, wait, you didn't provide any public notice and, and we did it. So, but you know, just that made me think about, you know, are we pushing it out to whatever we can think of? So what if, I'm sure you have it.
The platforms, the notify me, the website. Traditionally, some cities discuss the city web mailer would kind of burn through that budget. Several times already this year, so we didn't do a city web mailer, like a survey. And we didn't do Seattle Times, but every electronic way.
Yeah.
You know, the groups that sign up for particular notices. And really between now and next Tuesday, now that we have the forum thing, take the care of whoever is on or board of commission council. Can make us your citizens. But it's word of mouth through those groups and you and whoever you can talk to between now and Tuesday.
Shoreline, they have the shoreline use law that there's a, there's a. Shoreline area.
Yeah, it's legislative, it's not a decision, it's not project related, it's not a budget judicial. So if you feel like you have an interested party person or group that you would like to forward it to, feel free.
So Stewardship Foundation and some others also. You know, push it out usually and. For the park, we had, uh, we had a number of parks board members who were associated with PTAs. And they've got information out through the PTAs. That was now schools out, so that's not so easy to do.
Maybe we shouldn't have a station seven that for.
Rotary is going to be notified.
Oh, Rotary, yeah.
Do that.
If you have ideas, you need to, uh, need to bounce my staff or you need help or look at an email or whatever between now and Tuesday, just shoot me an email. Well, take those extra measures. I just don't have any more money to do newspapers, Eagles, which somebody reads much of it.
Yeah, I don't know about next door these days. It was active for a while, but seems to be more of a right place. I can post a post out on Facebook too, on families and then on the blogs and everything. That's great.
And be careful with the content. So whatever exposure the city has through the clerk on those platforms is done. If, if you take it and telegraph it and share it, make sure it's consistent with the copy from the city. Don't start inventing your own take on this. No, no, you, uh, the material should be available, both on the web or whatever, but don't, don't start changing. Add photos. You know, or adding words. It's, I don't, social media is interesting.
Yeah.
I don't think we have that problem, but I just love the need to. Make sure we don't go there.
Good.
Like, you know, they're just making controversial. So say, hey, look what they're doing to housing. Chill out at the open house.
Uh, we've no sense in comments. So we know our next meeting agenda will be public hearing. Want to talk about before we both shop?
I have one comment to make and I know this is old business. It's in regards to the parks and the park section of the comp plan. I know it's, it's ended and devoid, but I just wanted to throw that out there for the record. And that is that some sort of forest management plan, I think, would be very helpful for the, the city residents. And the city interface with the, the residents. Because if you have to cut down a tree, you have to. Uh, because if you have to cut down a tree, you have to go back uh to get a another biologue permit with another pool and the um, the the arborists to come out, but if if we could somehow update it and streamline it to allow uh a comprehensive forest management plan to be placed in the uh, you know, attached to the permit, then uh it would help residents not have to keep coming back and going through that process, just the thought. And I say this because with the tree canopy report, uh, there is no disc, if if we have a much more robust, sorry, I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting. We have a much more vibrant, robust uh tree canopy, but forest management is not discussed in that document. And really ultimately what that means is the residents have, the the forest management falls on the the shoulders of residents. So I would hope some sort of discussion that we would um, like, you know, uh, put that in the comp plan that we would consider or acknowledge that forest management must occur or something to help support residents uh with forest management.
You know, council member Riddle is part of some urban forest planning group and like they don't remember its name or whether they have put anything together. So John, do you remember? Uh, so I will try to find out. But I think the thought is a good one, if we could streamline the uh permit process or give people more awareness of what uh you know, what could be done uh from that management plan. But I mean, that might be something down the road, but I also wonder if there's something council member Reynolds that evolved in the Frank Givens and Grant or might be work already.
Wonderful. Yeah, I just was thinking if in the context of the comp plan for the parks and recreation, especially because that tree canopy report came out.
Right, or it's better than it was.
No, and secondarily in line with, you know, the planning commission being able to bring up um topics to perhaps add something that can be um looked at in the future, just a thought.
We also have the tree board that has that kind of, you know, that I know that in past, they've got that urban forest management.
Right, and I perhaps in the zoning, the context of the zoning code, it really is appropriate, this is an appropriate place for that discussion as well. Looking at that tree ordinance, um, and I know that the battery book was created, but uh we, you know, forest man, if if we continue the status quo, uh, who is there? But the forest is over growing and uh there's no discussion about managing this wonderful resource that we have, but it's not about um, it it's just managing a resource so that we do balance the safety without, um, you know, uh, what is it, straitjacketing people and they're, they'll even manage it because it's really, you know, you've you've got the private versus public versus you know, but it's wonderful resources.
And I can tell you the tree board has had many conversations about that exact uh tension between private and public.
Just a a comment, like council member Casover has raised the point that some of our trees, especially like the big big lean maples, they did a useful life too. So how does that factor into management plans or directions? And then the council itself has been very interested in the I Tree Report and the um carbon sequestration amounts that our tree canopy provides. So speaking of greenhouse gas emissions, it's huge. And then the environmental services value of the trees, also another really huge number. And this is US Department of Agriculture model that we're using to come up with these values. So uh I'm sure down the road we'll be doing more with that. Uh, I I think that report isn't as well known or understood, but I think from as council members, we think it's kind of a game changer in terms of showing that our city is contributing so much to greenhouse gas emission reduction compared to Lake City Way, say.
Right.
Yeah, so uh this, you know, how do we give to the region? We give to the region with our tree canopy for greenhouse gas emission production.
No, I I I I appreciated that information, but there was no regard to managing it.
Right.
And that's where I think is the missing piece for the city. And so, and then if you look at the tree ordinance and that's really where the the management of it. So if if residents do come and they have to go through the process of getting an arborist, if they can come up with a site plan and the arborist not in in one fa, in one grand suite in permit or or site plan that an arborist has looked at where not one tree at a time, but it's done through multiple trees have been assessed and uh, you you know, a plan that that strategically um lays it out for that property, you have many forest management plans in rolled into the permitting process. So just a thought, I mean, I just want to throw that out there because I know it's a uh, you know, I wasn't discussed and I was waiting for the tree, the parks department to make their comments, but I didn't realize that they'd already finished. And I know this discussion is a business, but it was a record I wanted to make.
It's a good comment to bring back to the council to for future records.
Yeah.
And a comment?
Not this will be your first time ever in life being done for mine, right? Then when I make a motion to adjourn. And I should return. Second, I'm something all of it, right?
Thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
Thank you.
Christine.
Take some cookies home. Take them home. I'm not taking them home. Otherwise, Mark has.